Okay, welcome everybody to our council meeting on August 6th. We will move forward with the agenda and we've had a chance to review it. And if there's nothing to add, can I get a motion on that please? By Council Gerard, seconded by Council Nado, all in favor? Karen. Okay, in the minutes, everybody's had a chance to review the minutes. No errors or omissions, everybody's comfortable with act. We move forward with the motion, moved by Council Karen, seconded by Council Costecheck. Being resolved, the Council town Nipua approved the minutes of the regular meeting and public hearing held July 19, 2022 is circulated. All in favor? Karen. Okay, we are into council reports. Anybody have a council report today? I know it is summer. Council Gerard.
Our report on behalf of public safety, just to make the community aware. For many years, we've talked about that we need a bylaw enforcement officer in our community. And we have filled that role and now have an active bylaw enforcement officer in the community. And that is former retired Staff Sergeant Mark Morehouse. He will be our new bylaw enforcement officer within the community. He's had a great relationship with all members. He's always treated the community fairly and we are very fortunate to have someone with his experience. And he will be in the community a couple of days a week doing bylaw enforcement. So I thought that was exciting because we've heard it from the community that we needed to fill that role. And council has got a great candidate. There it is.
Yeah, no, that's perfect. I mean, you're right, that's always been the problem, right? People come to us and then we say, yes, we know we have a bylaw, but we're not really quite sure how we're going to enforce it. And now we have Mr. Morehouse, it's perfect. And he, he'll be really good for the community. He's well-known and he's well-respected and he knows most of us, usually because we've been good, of course. But yeah, so yeah, I'm really glad to have you more forward.
Can I maybe add to that?
Sure.
On September 9th at 6 o'clock at Legion, it is Friday, so it will be a conjunction movement with me drop. There will be a come and go, that's all Mark wanted. And anybody who wants to go and shake his hand and, you know, read them and say a few words is that we'll be able to do so. And there will be, I think they're going to plan to put something out on social media, maybe the paper, I don't know yet. But anyway, that'd be a nice little moment for everybody who wants to either say goodbye to the old sergeant or you want to meet new bylaw enforcement officers.
Alright, still want to be friends with, on your terms.
Okay, any other council reports? If not, we will move on to the bad job operators, Denise.
Thank you, Mayor. So working on my regular update is that things have progressed nicely. We did some walkthroughs with sites, unfortunately, we're still waiting on some parts for final completion. So we can't do a full commissioning of that site yet. There's a holdup on some generator transfer search parts, I believe, some electrical components. There is word that they are coming, so I think they're slightly ahead of our 40-week delivery date. Something ridiculous they're giving. RCMP is nearing completion. I was in there last week with the RCMP division, did some final checks and see if we spotted anything. So we went through with the LCL on site now and had a good round. We'll bring the council in there once the prisoner areas kind of tidy up yet. It's kind of a little bit chaotic in there, they're going to go to paint, so it's kind of a little difficult there. So hopefully, I'll confirm with LCL when we can get into that site, do a full walkthrough with council. How the works has been very busy as usual between rainfall and trying to do digs and staff holidays. But in the meantime, we've completed some stormwater upgrades on Dinsum Street here in cooperation with April Eve coming. Currently, they're digging on the back end of Main Street for a four-plex service extension for that zone. Mill Street is scheduled for shortly after they complete that project. We've had a number of contractors come through, so some may have noticed that the northern town has some work done. So we brought in West Can again this year to do some micro seal. So they ran through some streets up there and accompanied the side of HMK and showed it nice and smooth. We also had the community fund bringing in a contractor to do some work on the bike park. So a two-wheel revolution was there to do some work. Coming contractors, we have several coming in. Unfortunately, they keep getting bumped back, but we have the most favorite Hatcher coming or the Quper is somebody knowing. The crack city contractor is also scheduled to come, they'll be following them. In situ form is scheduled to come shortly, so some of the most unigent town and that's in preparation. So they're doing some cleaning and some televising of all our serving area now, we'll be getting some work done. In conversation with Hydro, it looks like we could see them, they've already mobilized the material, but we're hoping to see them here possibly in this week, early next week. We can maybe use a streetlight installation on CN site, sort of meaning of the commercial side. It's been a little difficult to scratch and source some contractors, so we're starting to reach this a little bit further out of the zone, which is abnormal. So it looks like we'll have a few new ones joining our lineup. We did finally manage to get some line painting done and we'll get staff to continue on that as time goes on. So it's been rolling. We've also had a number of job postings out in the meantime, just to aid in the compliment staff. So hopefully with the next council meeting, I'll send updates on some new hires and those ones.
Okay, any questions for council? Darren?
Not, I just ask in behalf of the community, because the community asks to be regular and they should be on TV and for the media to cover. Curious on the status of the tennis courts and still if we're going to see that finished off this year or not.
Email me believe for an update on when they could come paving. I'm not the first to hear back of my team. So as soon as I do, I'll let you guys know an email when we have that. So once they're in town, they'll be responsible for paving the tennis courts.
That contract was booked a year ago and it means it's just a matter of ability on their part. The town has done what we can do and we're at that stage.
I just don't think we have any power on them, right?
It's all on a jury now and finding, it doesn't matter which one it is.
You know, it's unfortunate, but yeah, well, stay hopeful. Jason, did you have something?
You know, I guess what you can do is you can
Pardon?
Get rid of them. And you know, that might send a message too, like they can't take advantage of these small communities. You know, delays come and sure, we're waiting, but we're already waiting, right?
We'll be delayed for another year for the bigger stuff. We might look at a small contract tackle some of the patching, which I mean, still look at as they will be introducing paving. I was in town and I seen that they work as well. So let's see if they can do some of the patching, but the street work stuff, they've got their schedules built already, so.
Right. The question I had was actually this weekend, we had our, the Nipua Blue Dolphins had their, they hosted their tournament. And it was really, it was really apparent that even with a smaller than usual crowd there, that it maximizes every single bit of space inside the pool area. And it made me really think about how seeing the pool develop and expand a little bit, how important it is for the future of the community and for Nipua and swimming in general. And I was just checking to see what's the update on, is everything still set to go for them to start digging on the new pool slide?
I'm not too sure. I've kind of left that in Heidi's hands because I've been overwhelmed with other stuff. I think she's been talking and hope.
Want to talk about it tomorrow morning at the end?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, everybody.
One more. Yeah, I had a couple of questions about to, we were looking at, we don't have to worry about paving. We were looking at putting some recreational opportunities in CN property. Is that something that we can move forward on?
It is, again, staff and contractor building, that's the biggest problem I have right now. We have to privatize servicing all of these new bills that need water and sewer. So unfortunately, those priorities jump ahead of the recreation side of things. So once we have those completed, we have staff that are able to work on those other sides, that's what's going to happen.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Denise. Okay, we have no correspondence, we'll move on to find out. Everybody's had a chance to review the July accounts. Everybody's comfortable with the money being spent? Can I get a motion, please? Moved by Council Costecheck, seconded by Council Gerard. Being resolved, we reapproved the accounts from July 2022, totaling 1,177,403.91. As reviewed and representing check 202201134 to 202201452, excluding 202201235, 202201236 and 2022013440. All in favor? Karen. Okay, Council Gerard is ruining himself for conflict and Brian, can you turn the TV around?
Cold rice.
Okay, we're going to move forward. Oh, you can't just shoot the camera. And we'll forward the motion, moved by Council Perrin, seconded by Council Nado. Being resolved, we reapproved check number 202201235, 202201236 and 202201340 for July 2022 to Home Hardware and Nipua Glasco Co-op, totaling 17,108.3. All in favor? Okay. Okay, Colleen, we're moving on to mobile home licensing fees.
So this is just manual resolution you passed and it's to set the 2023, the year going forward into the mobile home park and what they're going to pay for their taxation, but they're called actually mobile home licensing fees. And it's basically based, it's changed by the percentage increase or decrease of the municipal school tax budget revenue, plus minus assessment percentage decrease or increase. So it is strictly based on what others have seen in their tax increases or decreases. And in this particular instance, there'll be a 0.64% increase in the license increase for 2003.
Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward. Move forward with motion on that, moved by Council Perrin, seconded by Council Nado. Being resolved, we reapproved an increase abruptly 0.64 to the mobile present, to the mobile home licensing fees for 2023 under the authority of bylaw number 3032. All in favor? Karen. Okay, Colleen, we're moving on to unfinished business, the zoning amendment proposed by law.
Okay, so as you all know, we had a public hearing on July 19th, I believe it was. And we did have our presentation from the public, bringing forth concerns and objections. So looking at a process going forward, you have to debate and decide tonight which avenue you're going to choose, whether you're going to stand firm when the bylaw act was presented that was given for streeting on the 19th of July, or whether you've heard enough insufficient evidence at the hearing to change your course of action. So either by rejecting the bylaw or proposing some type of amendment or a minor or major. So just to back right up, so we're getting started before any discussion. Bylaw 3216-22 was drafted to carve out a parcel that's in southwest 341415 for institutional use. It was a 3090 per parcel. Aware of the potential for developing the balance of their property into the future, the owners of the property made the decision to proactively alter the zoning of the entire quarter section to reflect uses they deem compatible with the area and to advance a growing community value. The choice set forth the residential portion or area as a residential multi-unit RM1 zone was contemplated at length by the property owners and was deliberately chosen to provide flexibility under the town's zoning bylaw for uses that are permissible in an RM1 not related to housing. Such are those uses potentially in the future for a community center, a school, a place of worship, a park, a playground. There's many uses. So on June 7th, first reading was given to that bylaw to amend the zoning. The next steps after that first reading involved under the Planning Act, the circulation of the notice of public hearing for zoning amendments to properties within 100 meters and a provisional circulation to various departments and agencies. The Nipua area and planning district actually served the notice on all property owners within a 250-meter distance, which is one and a half times greater than what's required under the Planning Act. The Planning Act then sets out various obligations and legislation clauses that must be followed. And as the planning documents come forward, if there are people expressing concerns or objecting to, the following applies. If a sufficient number of objections are received, council can either give second reading to the bylaw or pass a resolution to not proceed. To be sufficient, objections must be received from at least 25 persons or 50% of the total number of owners of property located within 100 meters of the affected property. On July 16th, sorry, I said 19th, the required public hearing was held. Five of the individuals attending the hearing relayed their concerns with the density proposed for the residential area as well as concerns regarding traffic and access. There was one written objection also received expressing concerns with the density of the residential area among others. So council left that particular night, did not give second reading to the bylaw and of course, it's on your table tonight to consider whether you're deploying the guard for second reading. So just to analyze it in relation to how we have to comply with the Planning Act, the process to be followed hinges on whether a sufficient number of objections were received from property owners within 100 meters. At the close of the hearing, it was noted that neither threshold being 25 eligible persons or 50% of the property owners within 100 meters was met. As a result, council would be well within the rights to proceed with sections only vogue of 3216 as originally proposed and give a second reading tonight, third reading in our next meeting. Throughout the course of the hearing, though, matters such as traffic, access, etc. were brought forward. A common theme, though, however, related to the intensity of the proposed residential zone being residential multi-unit zone. Persons presenting at the hearing appeared to be more accepting if there was a change to a residential zone of less intensity. And any future development that might come forward with a greater intensity would be evaluated on its own merit. So you have options. You can either, number one, proceed and give a second reading to the bylaw as it was originally proposed with a third reading on September 6th. Since a sufficient number of objections was not received, you would be well within your abilities to do so. You could have proceeded and given second reading to the bylaw as originally proposed. And although there is no legislative requirement to do so, because sufficient number of objections were not received, you could give notice to those that attended the hearing to submit a second objection. I would advise though, because you did not receive sufficient objections at the first hearing, you will get the same amount of objections at the second hearing because you cannot include any new presenters who did not attend the hearing. So because we did not meet sufficient at the hearing, even allowing them the opportunity to send in a second objection would not meet the criteria. So I think I would advise, well, if you proceed that, wrote in a letter we provided explaining all this too, and I think the only map. The other option is you consider altering the bylaw prior to second reading, which is what you're going to talk about right now. To change the residential multi-unit zone to a residential single unit zone. This change would be allowable under the Planning Act. And further, since the impact of this alteration would not, or would actually reduce the intensity of the residential area and not change the original intent of the bylaw, because it's still residential, council would actually support this alteration as a minor alteration under the Planning Act and you would not be required to hold another public hearing as would the Planning Act would tell you if it was going to be a major alteration to the event. So I guess I just need you to talk about it and get some direction about where we go with this.
Good question. You said that at the public hearing, there wasn't enough residents or residents to, what was the number that they needed to come? Or what percent did they need?
Twenty-five eligible, eligible also is quantified by an eligible objector. Is one that could actually vote in election, know in the town of Nipua on that to put a big public hearing's out.
Okay. Like what, what number did they need to come and compared to what number came?
Well, that's one question, because if you started including everybody that lives at the Broadway Apartments, we put upwards of 100 people. We actually only had, we had 14 people who attended the hearing plus the owner. If you actually removed some of them that weren't eligible, I think I said we had 12 eligible people that would have been there to vote. So they had half of what they required. If you look at it from a properties perspective, there was only 11 properties as well. And you know, taking out of consideration, the Broadway Apartments would have one owner, a property owner. They still fell short of the requirement there. I think they needed 17 and they would have wanted 11.
Okay. Okay, who would like to speak to this?
I'll speak.
Okay, go ahead, Councilor.
Yeah, I would like to speak in favor of supporting this subdivision as RM1 as requested by the landowner. This particular zoning of this, it's important that we get this passed through. This whole, in terms of zoning of the property, because it has large implication on the overall development of the institutional, the institutional area as well as the RM1 area. And there are some time constraints that we have to meet. I look at the RM1 providing great flexibility to the area, although there is absolutely at this point no subdivision applications being made on that said property. It's just the RM1 to provide that flexibility going forward. And as the CAO mentioned, it could range anything from single-family housing to churches, playgrounds, whatever going forward for that property. And whereas if it does go RS, anything that goes forward there other than a single-family house has to come through and have to go through that process. So I would be in favor of supporting the RM1 as requested by Mr. Zettler and his original application. My fear too is that if this doesn't go through as RM1, he would have the right to remove this application if he so chose.
Council Perrin.
Oh, I will be supporting the RM1 as well, original tent by the applicant. But also, we have been tasked to always think long range and pave the way for our future of the town to bring in developers, to bring in businesses and events. We've talked in town a lot about a variety of different things over this term. I know I've talked a lot about the learning training center that, you know, believe it or not, we're working on stuff like that. It's odd that I'm not giving many reports lately because most of them have been in camera and confidential at this time, but to be released soon enough. By providing the RM1, we have people looking at the site that may want to put another institution there and it's ready-made for it. The fewer hiccups that we have in the way of development, the more enticing our town is. If you have access to the KAR magazine, there are two huge write-ups about the town of Nipua and how is it expand, it is expanding and all the activity and construction going here. We are under the eye of the province and neighboring provinces. And this is one more thing to make it attractive for developers to come in, for businesses to come in. We're opening the door for them. We still have a lot of influence going forward with helping arrange the property to its best use. Future councils can do that. We have roads, sewer and water. We're planning now for what is best suited for the future. So in going with RM1, I totally believe that that is what we are still doing.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Anybody else?
Karen.
Councilor Edley. You're very happy, sorry.
Oh, that's fine. I would, I would also echo Council Gerard, Council Perrin's comments. I guess probably some people would consider me still a newbie at, even here for 25 years. But one of the things that I listen to over the years is a lot of people discussing on what it could have, should have, and different planning that should have been done over the years. And I think here's an opportunity to look at a bigger picture. I believe that we should be following Mr. Zettler's proposal and certainly all the, you know, agreeing with it. And I believe that this is, this is good toward the better of the community at the end.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Anybody else, Councilor Nado?
You know, first off, I'd like to say, you know, I think it's very appreciative of everyone that the landowner themselves has taken this step to help provide property that's required in order to have this institutional area up. I think that takes a lot of credit and I think that's something that sometimes isn't appreciated enough. I myself would have, would prefer to see it as a single-family residential and then escalate it as needed, when needed, because I think it gives you a little more leeway, the backwards leeway. You know, I understand how having an RM gives you leeway to just build whatever's permissible under that. However, the, the single family gives you the opposite. You can still go bigger and better, but then there's a little more due process. So for myself, I just, I feel that the single residential would be the way. Either way that we do vote, it's definitely a good vote for Nipua. I don't think there's a bad vote here. It's a good vote for Nipua either way. And I understand, you know, that we're not always seeing eye to eye, but we're always respectful of each other's inputs. And I think one other thing to note is, is it, it's something that, however it goes in the end, is going to be good for Nipua. And it's going to be something that that public hearing that we had, we heard from residents. And the residents have made it known that they want to watch how everything's developed in the future regardless, just to make sure that traffic isn't a concern and also that the density of population in that area. You know, I know in my area where I live in the community, I was a little worried when they opened up this one section of street that it would, it would intensify traffic, but it actually has had the opposite result. It's actually lowered it. So sometimes until you see it, it's, it's hard to really fathom what's happening until it comes. So I think it's, it's definitely going to be good either way. So thank you to the landowner for, for coming this far.
Anybody else? Council Costecheck.
I would like to state that I'm actually in favor of the RM1 process. And I like to believe that as a community, this opens up opportunity for anything that needs to come in. And I think you need to trust in council as well and public hearings and all of the process that works. And it does work. The planning is a long way off and we, as council members, they're going to put things that are desirable and that are needed in the community. I like to have faith in that, that that's going to happen in the future. So I mean, you know, Council Nado, I agree with you, either way, it's an opportunity for Nipua. It's growth for Nipua and that's what we want to see.
Anybody else?
Okay, I guess as mayor, I only give one vote too, like everybody else. But I would like to say I agree with Council Nado. I mean, it's a tough decisions, but I think my concern is that, you know what? We're actually voting on a blank slate. We have no idea really what's going to occur out there. We don't know when it's going to occur. I know you should trust your council, I agree with that, but we won't always be here. And I think it would be, from my point of view, I believe we should give councils going forward the best opportunity to make the decisions that they want. And I believe that by not turning it back to what Jason suggested, residential, I think we're tying the council's hands on what they can do. But that's just my position. I know you can argue it both ways. You're right, I mean, we are a growing community. We definitely have a need for lots of important buildings that need to occur in this, in this town. But I just think that we had the opportunity to know what was going to go there and then have the public hearing and then do it. This way, we've actually signed off on what's going to go there and we will have less input than we could if we had to have another public hearing. But you're right, we're seven people and we're going to, we're going to have a vote later this evening and it'll be what it is. So thank you.
Okay, what are we on to? We are on to interest investing in Canada, Colleen.
Some great, great news.
Okay, good deal.
So on August 8th, the Honorable Dan Van Deel, Minister of Northern Affairs, Minister responsible for economic development in Canada and Minister responsible for Canadian Northern Affairs. and Minister responsible for Canadian Northern Economic Development Agency, and Member of Parliament for St. Boniface, St. Vitell, on behalf of the Honorable Donald Blank, Minister of Ninja Governmental Affairs, Infrastructure and Communities, and Manitoba Labor and Super Protection and Government Services Minister Rich Haller, announced more than 34.4 million in funding for ten wastewater and waste management projects in Manitoba. Among these projects, and I'm not going to read that out, it would be here forever, is the wastewater treatment system in Niqwa, will be expanded and upgraded to increase capacity to treat and manage wastewater and stormwater. The federal and provincial investment of 4.2 million combined involves implementing a moving bed biofilm reactor system, upgrading the treatment building, and adding a lab, among other awards. So it's nicely one of ten approved projects. And just to break that down a little bit, the 2,283,000 will come from the federal government at 40% of the project. The province is going to put in 1.9 million for 33.33% of that, and municipality is responsible for 26.67% of the project. So if you look at it on a dollar basis, we're putting in almost 27 cents on every dollar spent on this project, which will be $5,708,500. This is the Investing in Canada infrastructure grant, and we've been waiting, oh, three years since our application, for, since we put it forward as an idea in the head of the project sponsors. And it was so nice to get this, so I'm needing a resolution that we get this contract signed and waived and get on with it.
Okay, any questions and comments?
Yeah, it's great to hear this, Counselor George.
I just want to comment, I mean, within this announcement, it takes away the need of the town to venture a greater portion of this project, so it has huge, long-term savings to the rate payers.
Still a problem I couldn't venture, but we have different routes of how we will focus this now.
It's such a huge savings to the community, it's, yeah.
Okay, we will move forward with that resolution. Move by. Seconded by Counselor Costeck. Be resolved, that we approve the Signing of Investing in Canada Infrastructure Program Contribution Agreement, GIS-EQ-1018, as related to the Niqwa Wastewater Treatment System Upgrade and Expansion Phase II Project. All in favor? Okay, mitigation preparedness program.
So this is a program that came out actually kind of in conjunction with the 2020 flood. And what it basically is, is the province has recognized that with the increasing occurrences of precipitation and rain and storms and flooding and whatnot, they decided that they need to put a program in place so that municipalities can start to mitigate and prepare for future disasters or occurrences of similar like. So in 2020, we actually made an application to this program. And what it is, is money, is when you file a disaster claim, you are required to pay your deductible under your insurance program, which in the case of these types of instances is $100,000. So our very first claim that went in, because it was a little bit smaller, because as we all know, we have large projects, but we couldn't mitigate very much on the front end because we needed engineering reports and design teams to look at our projects. We ended up getting, I think it was around $37,000 in the first instance. We have since submitted an application applying to the 2022 flood intake as well. We had actually, our management operations actually toured the engineers around, I think, 12 sites last week. We will be putting in another application, be able to get back that portion of our deductible that way. We have to pay so that we can invest again in mitigation and protection programs on behalf of Niqwa. So we just need a resolution to support to make that application.
Okay, any questions, any comments?
Are there, like, have we flagged all the areas that repeatedly flood in Niqwa? Like, we know lies River, River Bend Park floods continually. Is there something we can do with those curves around the river there to?
No, you cannot touch, it's very difficult to touch or do any work on a waterway. You've probably noticed, even preparing for Park Lake, some postings, we take into account the natural waters applications. So you have to deal with Departments of Fisheries and Oceans, you have to deal with Transport Canada, this is a lot of stuff the staff has done for us. There are certain type periods of the year and timing that you cannot enter the waterway or perform any works in there. You can't look at a fish sideways, you can't touch anything in there, pick up a shovel. They have water rules, let's just say that way. So no, there will be no alteration. Also to be noted under the disaster money is you cannot remediate beyond what you have. You have to put it back to the exact state that it was before, which is fortunate for us because Park Lake really did not have any pre-existing condition and was not registered anywhere in curricular federal documents, so it suggests it was a certain way. It did not meet any requirements, it did not meet the spillway requirements or any retention for holding water. So we are able to build to meet safety and health standards now, and meet all the requirements of DFO and everybody that needs us to meet. So we're, we're gaining a big advantage there. But yeah, you have to put it back into the state or as close to.
That's the rules. Okay, we'll move forward with that motion. Move by. Counselor Perry. Seconded by Counselor Costeck. Whereas the town of Niqwa sees the benefits of applying to the mitigation preparedness program, MPP, to direct the DFA deductible toward building local resiliency against extreme weather events and enhanced disaster mitigation and preparedness. Therefore, be it resolved that the council of town of Niqwa support the application to MPP to continue the mitigation efforts in the areas of the community that continue to be at risk of flooding. All in favor? Carry. Okay, Colleen, we have municipal service delivery for the Yolea Center application.
Yeah, so, so the Yolea Center doesn't fall under our purview, but an application has to be made municipally. So as you remember, we did a municipal service delivery application for the Handicap Service a few years ago. We also filed with the Yolea Head, and I think there was one set for every environmental. This particular program notes deficiencies and recommendations in how you can operate better, how you can find savings, how you can improve what you're doing. It's a voluntary program, and municipalities can participate and get value service and try to understand what cost savings you can find in your programming. So we can leave the one under the Handicap Service now, and there's some other recommendations that we come forward, and I believe a lot of them will probably be acted on. And we just thought, let's take another step, this, the Yolea Head is very significant in our community. We, we believe that we can't run a community without all of that size or, you know, the arena that exists there. And, you know, speaking with you just ahead of time to know whether to put the resolution on the plate for your discussion, just making sure you're all in support so that, and that the Yolea Head Committee actually knew this could be going on. So if you're in support, we will file it on as a municipality that it has the ability to do so.
Any questions, any comments?
I have one comment.
Yep.
I brought this information from the Yolea Head here at last night's meeting, and they were very much in support of us making the application.
Yeah, no, I think it's a call for you, Counselor Perry.
Oh, well, I was giving.
Oh, good for you, okay.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea too. I mean, the town obviously is very involved with the Yolea Head. I mean, we give quite a bit of money every year that we feel the, the need. But I think it's really nice if, if we can all see ourselves and the community what, what might be improved upon, or what changes could be made. I mean, it's, I mean, that's, it's a big operation that runs there. There's a lot of money that flows through there, and it's very important to our community. So I'm very much hopeful that the province will, will give us the opportunity to have this review.
Okay, how can I get a motion out? Move by. Counselor George. Seconded by Counselor Puff. Whereas the province has launched a second intake in the Municipal Service Delivery Improvement Program, MSDIP, to allow municipalities to conduct valuable money service delivery reviews. And whereas the Yolea Center serves the town of Niqwa, the neighboring municipalities, and the region as a key cornerstone facility for various recreational, leisure, and business purposes. And whereas the municipalities contribute significantly to the operations of the Yolea Center and deem that a full operational review is not only timely, but valuable to look at the contribution of the partners, the associated user fees, and various other streams of revenue with a focus on balancing same against the increasing expenses of running this facility and ensuring this asset can be managed sustainably into the future. Therefore, be it resolved, the council of town of Niqwa apply to the province to be considered for a review of the operations of the Yolea Center through the Municipal Service Delivery Improvement Program. All in favor? Okay, we are into subdivision Christian TD slash Big and Rich Limited, Colleen.
So this is subdivision 4437-22-8452, being lot 15 Walker, 348 Carter Walker Avenue now closed. Applicant being Sherry Francis from Christianson TDS and number of Big and Rich Limited. The applicant proposes to subdivide the land along the south side of Adelaide Street and town of Niqwa to build a smaller, single-family residential home on proposed lot 2. Municipal sewer and water is existing and drainage will be curb and gutter. This application is consistent with the development plan and meets the provincial criteria for a higher subdivision, which enables it to be given conditional approval without requiring an interdepartmental circulation or providing report. So community and regional planning of the brand office has now issued a conditional approval, and the applicant must now come for municipal approval. Proposed lot 1 that they're proposing will be 6,400 square feet, and proposed lot 2 will be 3,301.3 square feet. Proposed lot 2 will require a driveway and a curb cut. Under the development plan for the Niqwa area planning district, the land is designated as residential in the development plan and includes the following policy. Infill development and subdivisions or housing replacement in the existing designated residential areas shall be encouraged. And then when we look at the town zoning bylaw through the proposed lot 2, which will be the smaller lot, there will be a variation order required to reduce the minimum site area from 4,900 square feet down to 3,333 square feet, and reducing the minimum site width down from 50 feet to 33 feet. In addition to the site area and site width variation orders outlined above, the proponent may also have to obtain variation orders and meet side door setback requirements depending on the size and shape of the dwelling to be constructed on the proposed lot 2. So like I said, this subdivision application already has been conditionally approved. However, there are certain things, even without circulation, that are deemed relevant to this particular subdivision and must be met for criteria. A subdivision approval has to come from the town, of course, there's a fee. There has to be a two-lot plan subdivision drawn by a Manitoba lab surveyor, and PD will copy the plan of subdivision showing the total area of each lot, any moze, if any, and public reserves, if any. So a surveyor will have to complete that. If council intends proposing conditions, the proponent will have to satisfy all those conditions. There would be easements agreements with Manitoba Hydro Center Grass, or perhaps they would say they're not required, that the, the. Rightaway agreements with MTS, or perhaps if they're not required, they would deem to respond to that. And also with Westman Communications, if there's any requirements there. If there's any removal or relocation of any public or private utilities as a result of the proposed subdivision, it would be the expense of the developer and the worthy customer. And the proponent also has to contact the Office of Drinking Water prior to construction to confirm regulatory requirements under the Drinking Water Safety Act. There is a new process when you proceed with subdivisions now under the Planning Act, which recently has been amended, that the proponent actually, should you choose to reject, has the right to appeal that to municipal board, as would they have a right to appeal the conditions stated in the community and regional planning condition approval. You have 60 days to make that decision, we're going at it tonight, following which the applicant will be given a period of time where they can make an appeal, which has to be, make the 30 days of an emergency decision. Should you choose to reject the subdivision, oh, you are required to list your reasons on your, they have written reasons, this is on your objection.
Any questions, any comments? Counselor.
Jeez, I'm talking a lot tonight. Sorry. So on the application, I just have some questions. This looks a little different than we usually see. It says that the proposed land use, and it's checked level flat, and it's also checked hillier. Now, I don't know that specific section. Like, I know there's a hill involved. Like, is it hillier or is it flat? I don't know if anyone can help fill me in on that. So it's hillier? So why is flat or level? I, I wonder if that would have a bearing on the result of this sub, this application being already pre-approved? You don't think that would have a bearing? The other part that was a little different is it says underneath level flat hillier is near a water body, like a lake, river, creek, it says. How far would you say it is from Park Lake? Even though Park Lake's not there, it will be there.
It's still not there.
Okay. And then in section seven, you know, we're really, I think this council more specifically is really trying to protect residents. And we had some flooding, a lot of flooding from Park Lake, and it says flooding, flooding and drainage, has any part of this land been flooded? And it says no. But we know that whole section was underwater. So, again, these are just the inconsistencies that I'm seeing. Now, if it's just, if there, if you have to make changes and it has no bearing, I don't want to see the applicant waste $200, you know, making some changes. Like, that's not what I'm about. Counselor Perry, you have any? Oh, okay.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, okay, it is a hillier area, and we have a drainage bylaw, which, because drainage on hillier areas with retaining walls, et cetera, require a lot of thought, and this is an area that had drainage concerns that had been addressed. We're asking them to be addressed again with this for the development. The flooded area was to the south, to the east side of the road. Water did flood that, run through the lot and onto the road. So the actual site, because it at that time itself was low, had water pools in it, but with the construction, I can imagine with the drainage plan, that engineer drainage plan, that is to be addressed. It's on a 33-foot lot. We had our Building Inspector Jeff Cron explain to us that it was an existing 33-foot lot prior to the subdivision, therefore it falls under the rules where it can be built on as a 33-foot lot, as opposed to our new rules 50. So it's kind of like a grandfather thing, if I've got that right, Jeff?
I'm used to grandfather, but yes, that same period.
Okay, so close enough. So we've covered a lot of concerns. And I think one of, you know, water on the neighbors, we've dealt with this council. We've created, our staff have created the bylaw to deal with drainage, and this is an opportunity for us to implement it.
Anybody else? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by Counselor Perry. Seconded by Counselor Costeck. Be resolved, that we approve subdivision 4437-22-8452 Christianson TDS on behalf of Big and, Big and Rich Limited to subdivide lot 15, block 30, plan 348, plus PT Walker Avenue closed in northeast 21-14-15 west, or law for the construction of a single-family residential home on the proposed lot. Subject to obtaining the required variances to vary the minimum site limit to site area, obtaining the engineered drainage plan to encompass all properties owned by Mr. Big and Rich Limited situated on McGill Street and Adelaide Street, and implementing same to ensure that all drainage requirements do not negatively impact the adjacent properties and under the standard introductory build on the proposed new lot fit within the setback parameters set out in the zoning bylaw. All in favor? Opposed? Okay, we are down to what we discussed earlier this evening, men, the zoning S7-34-14-15 west, in regards to, what did we decide? Was it RM1?
RM1, who's that first reading?
RM1, yes. Okay, I think we've all had our discussion. I don't think there's probably anything to add. So we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by Counselor Perry. Seconded by Counselor George. Be resolved, the bylaw number 3216-22 being a bylaw of town of Niqwa, through Amanda Taylor, Town of Niqwa zoning bylaw number 3184-18 now be read for a second time. All in favor? Brian, Deputy Mayor, yes, and opposed. That motion is carried. Okay, we are down to the business. Anybody have anything they want to say?
Yes, Counselor.
I just want to comment that we did wrap up the 9:00 PM program on Facebook, and it was nice to see the community participation in that as far as lockup, remind the neighbors. We want Niqwa to remain a community of opportunity for good and not an area of opportunity for those doing bad. So, but you will see that those posts, I think it was great to see the community get involved in that.
Yes, I agree. Anybody else? Okay, we will move forward with the journey. Move by. Counselor Puff. Seconded by Counselor Costeck. Be resolved that the council of town of Niqwa do not join this regular meeting of council at 7:50, 8:00 p.m. All in favor? Carry.